Let me call you back. I'm going to go, let me call you back.
Erin?
I'm going to, I'm going to.
Good evening, everyone. This is Davy McNally, and we're going to get started on the Athens City Commission on Disability, our January meeting. It is January 20th at 5:03 PM. Welcome, everyone, and happy, happy to see everyone this new year. So we are going to get started as we always do with our call to order. So we have been called to order. Now we're going to go ahead and establish quorum.
Great, so this is Diane, and I'm going to call Rose. So Diane, and I'm not looking at you because I'm looking at my minutes. So you have to say your name or somebody say, somebody raise their hand so I can see you. Um, so there's me, Rose Deekes.
Here.
Um, Barry Dill, or Barry's not here anymore, is she? Samora?
Here.
Um, Claire Geisigum?
Here.
And Carolyn Lewis?
Here.
Sly Mata?
Here.
Davy McNally?
Here.
Cheryl Kudzinski?
I haven't seen her yet.
Okay, Arian Smedley?
Here.
JW Smith?
Here.
Noah Tremblay?
Here.
And is Lisa Simpson official yet?
I don't know if I've seen the letter come through, but.
I don't know that I've seen it either. Okay, is Lisa here? I didn't see her.
No.
No, okay. And I know Paige is here. And Scott. Okay, I think I have it. We have a quorum.
Yay.
Okay, great. Uh, let's go ahead and, uh, read through the mission, Carolyn.
Okay. The Athens City Commission on Disabilities is a committee of city government whose commitment is to provide a means for the concerns of people with disabilities to be heard, to advocate for public policy change, to provide expertise to the community on disabilities, and tell the community about the strengths and limitations of people with disabilities, as well as how the community can help them improve their quality of life, thereby ensuring equality of opportunity and full participation in community life for everyone.
Chairman, uh, Jay W., my sister does a great job with that, but does she have to do it every time? Or can you spread around or?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, Jay.
No, I mean, I love it, but it's, yeah, I don't know. What's, what's?
We should spread the, spread the, uh.
I think that'd be great sometime. Give her a little break sometime.
I know, then we change this.
All right. All right, well, we can talk about it.
Sure. Just a thought.
Makes sense.
I like it.
Uh, and just as, as a reminder, as we, uh, go through the meeting, if you could introduce yourself whenever you speak. That way it gives Nico, our interpreter, a moment to, to be able to, you know, let, uh, the audience know who's speaking. Let's go ahead and get started with the agenda. Uh, the first thing we need to do is approval of minutes for November. We did not have a December meeting, of course.
Um. I approve the November me, I moved that we approved the November minutes.
Second.
Okay.
Jay W. second.
Okay, any, any discussion? Look good to me. Uh, all, all in favor? If you could raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I think that's unanimous consent, so we don't need to take the no's or abstentions. Let's go ahead and move on to the next point in the agenda, the Treasurers Report.
This is Carolyn Lewis. I communicated with Patty in the mayor's office yesterday. We have $3,000. Eighteen hundred is for the Collinawards for the stipend, for the artists to design and to develop six awards. Then we have $1,200 for the awards or anything else we need to do later in the year. Still not a whole lot of money, but it's, it's pretty good. It's more than I expected, really. So we're grateful.
Okay.
With the total of $3,000.
Great. Thank you, Carolyn. Do we need to make a motion to approve that or just the report stands?
Yes, we should. I'll move the treasure port.
I second.
We have a second from Arian. All, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Raise your hand and aye.
Aye.
All right, I think that was unanimous as well, so we don't need to do the second part. Um, we do have one other agenda item and new business, which is going over, um, the coronavirus vaccine information, which was.
I haven't gotten my appointment letter.
Noah saying he hasn't gotten his appointment letter. Mr. Chair, I think that's what, what he said.
Oh, is that what you said, Noah? Okay, yeah, we can, we could talk about that at the, um, exec team on Friday. To see, make sure all the letters went out because I don't remember seeing Lisa's letter or I normally get CC'd in the letters when they get sent out and I don't remember seeing them yet. So we may have to follow up. Sorry, that was Davy.
This is Arian. These are, are you talking of appointments to the commission itself?
Yes.
Okay, I have not heard of a Lisa come through, and I have not heard of a reappointment for Noah come through council.
Okay. Well, we will follow up. So yeah, I was just going to say on new business, we're also adding on, um, after the committee goals introduction, just so everyone knows, uh, coronavirus vaccine information. So we just want to give, give the community, um, you know, an updated COVID vaccine. I know some people have already had their vaccines. Some of us are waiting. So yeah, we wanted to do that. So, but first under new business, uh, the committee goals introduction. So a lot of our meeting today is going to be spent, um, going to be given over to the committees to kind of talk about what their year goals are. Um, I know in, in our committee meetings, that's what we're going to talk about. Um, and our committees really drive what our commission does. Uh, we have our education outreach, acceptability, advocacy.
Work.
Communications. And all, all of these committees really, again, do the bulk of the work. That's how we want to structure our commission. And as many people in the city will tell you, we're very active and involved because of the amount of work we do here amongst commission members, but also within our committees. Uh, so I just want to make sure to give people time to do that. So moving into our, um, COVID vaccination. Um, so Ryan and Scott, I was planning to share my screen. Is that okay if I do that? Sorry to put you on the spot. Um, okay. Says that's fine. So let me go ahead and share my screen. And I'm going to go ahead and pass this over to Carolyn to kind of talk through really quickly. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Davy. Um, I was talking to the mayor the other day, so he sent me this document, and I called the Department of Health today just to see when people with disabilities were going to be in line. Of course, down here, if you see it, week number three. Let me see, let me see, that's number three. I'm sorry, uh, week number, uh, twenty-five, the week of January 25th, Ohio, seventy-five years of age and older, those with severe congenital or developmental disorders. And she said those are people, of course, um, who might have spinal cord problems, congenial problems, cerebral palsy and all that. So, uh, I, the health department will have a form that you'll need to get to sign and get your vaccination. Now, they're doing some at the health department, and Steve said they were planning to go to the new OUCOM building because there's lots of parking there, but he wasn't quite sure when that was going to happen. Maybe Arian might know more than I know. But I did call the Ohio State Department to see if they knew anything more about disabilities, people with disabilities, and they don't have that plan quite yet, but she said it's coming. So that's the best that, of course, everything's at the health department or probably pretty soon at OUCOM. And they do have, um, coronavirus.ohio.gov, coronavirus.ohio.gov. If you want to keep up with the schedule and, uh, what's being posted about the vaccine.
All right, yeah, and just to echo what, uh, what Dr. Lewis said, some of those people with severe congenital or developmental disabilities, I know the County Board of Developmental Disabilities is scheduling a lot of that. I think there's some confusion whether those of us who are maybe not served by the County Board of Developmental Disabilities, but have, uh, severe congenital or developmental disorders are also eligible. Um, and I think they're kind of clarifying that on the state level right now. Um, you know, and again, this is supposed to start next week, so we hope, I think a lot of us are hoping to hear back soon, so we know whether we're able to get scheduled or not. And there's also this really helpful list down here about, uh, different places that you are able to schedule. So you can go down to your county and, um, and then, you know, make a phone call whenever you come up on that list.
So I don't know if it's helpful, but I'm part of the, um, um, the Athens Village for older people, and I know I've had two phone calls asking from the health department as recently as this morning, saying, so when are you going to get your shot? So, I mean, I think it's really raven depending, because I'm not congenitally disabled. I was disabled by a car accident. So I was just going to suggest that calling the Athens County Health Department, they'd tell you stuff too, locally.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Rose.
Sure.
This is Davy. Are there any other questions or discussion?
Davy, uh, this is JW also. It, it reminds me, as always with these kinds of things, there are, um, frauds out there as well. So, uh, be aware of calls. I'm not saying it about you, Rose, but just people are calling and trying to get, um, information, saying, you know, if you signed up for the shot. So be very, very cautious about those kinds of calls and inquiries, emails.
Luckily, it's the director, so I, I know.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, absolutely.
And this is Davy. I think as well, there's, um, a lot of, I, I, I think I've gotten worried that there's a lot of fraud, uh, calls that are coming in for, like, the stimulus checks as well. So just be careful and cognizant. And I believe Diane had her hand up? Uh, you're on mute.
I, um, I wanted to make sure I got the, um, the web address. Did you say coronavirus.ohio.gov? Is that it?
Yes, uh, Ohio spelled out, Corona virus, all one word, at ohio.gov.
Dot ohio.gov.
Dot, dot ohio.gov, I'm sorry.
Dot ohio.gov. Okay, I'll put it in a minute. Thanks.
Okay. And Scott said that we had someone raising their hand? Was that Diane that you saw? Okay. Because sometimes, sometimes we can get, uh, questions from people who are not part of the commission.
We have Stephanie in the, uh, in the meeting. She had raised her hand.
Okay, Stephanie, if you'd like to unmute yourself and ask your question.
Um, I'm not asking a question. I was just going to comment that the other day I read that only 468 vaccinations had been issued in Athens County, and we have approximately 65,000 people living in our county. So part of what's, uh, the challenge here is, um, getting the vaccine so that they can be, people can be inoculated. So that was just something that I noticed, uh, the other day in some of the information being distributed.
Yeah, thank you for that comment, Stephanie. That's a good point in the amount of, uh, vaccines that are available. And then I saw Arian's hand go up first.
Davy, um, yeah, just to echo what's been said and to stress, um, there, there are limited vaccines, as everyone knows, and the phased approach is issued and determined at the state level. And so, uh, these priority groups, um, are determined by them and then implemented at the local level. Um, and as Dr. Lewis mentioned, individuals with, who, who receive services from the County Board of Developmental Disabilities are encouraged to contact the county board to get their appointment scheduled. And it's just so important that we get the word out to those high-risk groups that they're able to take advantage of these early phases. If an individual does not receive services from the County Board of DD, they're encouraged to contact the health department or one of those other pharmacies that Davy mentioned. Um, and we're just hopeful that we get more vaccines as, as, as days go by. But that twenty, that January 25th date, where we are, we are still waiting for details, and we're hopeful they're come, they'll come soon.
Yes.
This is Carolyn. The other thing they had in the letter too, that if you are scheduled for a particular time and you're still giving the vaccine, you still stay in the queue. They don't cut you off. You can still get the vaccine even though that date might have passed, and they're still vaccinating people beyond a certain date.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn, and thank you, Arian. Uh, Claire, I think you had your hand up?
Yes, this is Claire. I was wondering, and I hope that I'm, I hope that I'm not getting too ahead of myself, but in terms of the messaging and with all of the information that we're trying to put out there, where does the second dose fall in with that? Because I know especially in this area, trying, the transportation issues and trying to coordinate the logistics of receiving the second dose is going to be a big battle, uh, probably even worse than the first round. Uh, so I was just, I was just wondering what, what the conversation has been surrounding that.
Oh, this is, this is Carolyn. On my card, on the back of it, it says reminder return. This is my first card, return for a second dose, and it gave me the date to return.
Okay.
February the eighth, on 2021.
Okay.
So when you take the first one, you get a date for the second one.
That's great. Okay. I was, yeah, I definitely wasn't sure how that worked. So I feel, I feel better about that part. And then I guess when it comes to having a centralized resource, I imagine that, because I know that the local health departments are receiving an overwhelming number of phone calls, that sometimes a phone call might be the most accessible way for someone to ask that question or get their information. So would you say, but because I'm thinking about this in my role at HAPCAP too, um, would coronavirus.ohio.gov be the most accessible resource in terms of the web layout and how everything is formatted? And I wasn't sure if anyone had thoughts on that.
That's where this document came from, from the health, state health department. And they said they'd be putting these out ever so often. So I guess that might be, you can call, there is a number, but they're going to tell you to check the website.
Right, okay.
And this is Davy. In terms of website accessibility, ohio.gov is generally pretty good. Um, and this seems okay. Uh, in terms of some of the dropdowns, that would be outside my area of expertise, though.
Okay.
Okay, and we should probably go ahead and move on to our next piece of the agenda.
Noah Tremblay, I've had very feelings, but I've decided I will.
Good, Noah, I have to tell you, this is Carolyn, and maybe others have too.
Sure.
Mine was over in a blink. I, I didn't, my hands, I didn't even look at the needle. And I said, oh, are you done? Now, my arm was a little heavy last night, no pain, no, no throbbing. And now it's fine, just, just an overnight thing.
Right.
So Noah, better to be safe than, than sorry. I, I struggle too, as how fine just that I need to do this.
Absolutely. Thanks for that comment. Um, let's go ahead and move down into the next section of the agenda, which is, oh, the Social Steering Committee updates. Um, of course, SISL is the Southeastern Ohio Center for Independent Living that's based in Fairfield County and Hocking County. They are in the process of opening up, uh, a satellite office in Athens County as well. And the exciting news, JW has been part of this initiative as well. The exciting news is they're starting to accept referrals from Athens County. Um, that went out on the HAPCAP Wednesday resource list. Been out on a few other resource lists that I'm a part of. So, um, just as a general announcement, if, you know, if you're interested in receiving, uh, referral and linkage or information about disability-related issues, you can look up, uh, Southeastern Ohio Center for Independent Living. Give them a call and they can help you get connected. Anything to add to that, JW?
Yeah, this is JW. I, I, this last meeting, I felt much more comfortable and much more persuaded that it would be a good thing for us. So I want to encourage everybody to, when we get that satellite office down here, that outlet, it'll only help us, uh, in this community. Uh, I, I had doubts about sort of what they could offer us, apps we already had, but a lot of it was cleared up, and I just think it'll be a step in the right direction for us.
Yeah, this is Davy, and yeah, I, I agree. And I think it's one of those things that you don't really know what you're missing until, until you get it. And then, and then you have all these, you know, great information and a hub for information and advocacy and disability-related issues. So I'm personally just really excited about the whole process. We've, uh, cleared a couple hurdles on, on the state level in terms of getting it. It's in the state plan now. So now it's just all the other SISLs voting yes, um, which shouldn't be a problem. And then we'll start looking for space. Uh, but right now, everything's virtual anyways, so accepting phone calls and emails. So thank you. Uh, so that's old business, uh, committee reports. So in terms of committee reports, we'll start with the executive team. Um, we've really, you know, focused on setting intentions and goals. Uh, in terms of our overall goals for the executive team, we're really focused on being inclusive in terms of experience and identity, um, but also in terms of disability as well, to have, have more and more people join us with various types of disabilities. Um, so if you're, if you're sitting at home right now and following this and thinking, well, gosh, I have a really unique experience and, uh, something that I think could, you know, share with the commission, please let us know, and we'd love to get you hooked into one of the committees. So we're focused on being inclusive, growing our committees, and being sustainable as well within each of our committees as well. Uh, we have our next meeting coming up on January 22nd, and I think we need to decide whether that's 11:30 AM or 1:00 PM still, so we can talk afterwards. What, what else did I miss, other members of exec team?
I think you got it. One of the things we talked about was inviting people to the exec meetings. Did you mention that?
No, I didn't. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Diane?
Sure. So if there's anyone that wants to just see what we do at the exec team level, you're welcome to join us and just be a part of it and listen and ask questions.
You mean, we get to come to the high-power group? This is.
Yeah. The secret executives. Or a power group.
We, we do have a great group, and yeah, we want, we want more people to join and kind of get a taste of what it's like and what kind of planning we do. Um, and then also onboarding, uh, some, some new people since we had Barry and Scott retire from the commission to, to onboard Lisa, but also, uh, maybe one or two other people. All right. Uh, let's go ahead and move down into our committee reports. So our first committee report is accessibility. We did, uh, meet in the, uh, December and January. So I, I think we did not take off December because we already had a meeting scheduled with Jessica Dean with the City Engineer Department, and we met with David Riggs for, with code enforcement and, uh, in January. And, um, Diane, would it be okay if I, I, I don't know if you got my message. If you would like to give like a brief synopsis of that, that would be great.
Yeah, I got it like a minute before we met, but, but in, in general, what, um, what we did at our, at our most recent meeting with David Riggs was talk about, um, our interest in having a little more sense of how code enforcement can help to, um, assess accessibility. Um, and he talked about the process that that would need to go through city council to make recommendations on what that would look like and approve, and do any approvals of that. Um, but we also talked about trying to streamline what businesses who are doing construction or renovations in our community and what kind of information they could get about accessibility during that process. Um, so we're going to finalize, or we started it last year, but do a letter that the city would be giving out that would have, be jointly signed by the Accessibility Committee and the city, the code office, to let people know what are the main areas around accessibility that they should be thinking about, like parking and entrances and restrooms and spaces to get to whatever the product or service is. Um, and that we would help them if they needed some help in identifying ways to fix things or, um, what makes something accessible or not. So we would be both a resource and sort of proactively giving them some information. Does that cover what you're thinking, Davy?
Yeah, I think that covers, uh, the David Riggs conversation really well. And we have follow-up, a follow-up meeting we're going to schedule, I think, in May with them, uh, once we get that letter drafted. And, um, yeah, I think, I, I'm pretty excited about it.
Yeah, and with Jessica, we basically went through the report we had sent to the city talking about what are the main, um, kinds of issues that we see related to accessibility and explain them just a little more and just talk with her about making sure that those are thought about when they do projects. So it was a little more general, um, like with specifics, but how they can apply what we've been learning in what they're doing. And she's also very welcoming and open to what we've been giving them. So that's been, that's been helpful.
Yeah, it's been, it's been really some positive meetings with the city, city officials recently about, um, oh, sorry, this is Davy. Um, really positive meetings with city officials, and, uh, we have follow-ups scheduled with Jessica as well. Um, yeah, I think Diane encapsulated that really well. In terms of, uh, some of our goals and objectives, I think we'd really like to add, uh, two to three new people to our committee this, this year, uh, especially people who have, you know, a different, some different experiences with disabilities. We have a couple people who use wheelchairs. Uh, we have Diane, who's very knowledgeable about, um, ADA, and Noah, who's really knowledgeable, Rob Delak, who's very, and Tiffany Beals. Um, but we'd like to, we'd like to grow that a little bit, especially for, with people who have, uh, various types of disabilities as well to, to make things more accessible. Um, and our next meeting is, uh, February 11th at noon via Zoom. Are there any, uh, questions or comments on that? All right. Well, that's our, that's kind of what, what we're looking to, to do over the next year, and we're, you know, pretty excited and looking forward to it. So thank you, everyone. Let's move on to communications. I'll turn it over to you, Claire.
Thanks, yes, this is Claire, and we kind of.
And we had a meeting scheduled, I believe, for last week, but there were some technical issues, so we didn't get the chance to meet, but we were able to touch base over email. And we were able to develop some goals with some input from Dr. Lewis. And also just a reminder that we have a new addition to our communications committee. His name is Michael Rodriguez, and he is the, and I always forget his title. He's the Student Production Court Danger, I think, or that's his title for W O U B. And so we're really, really excited to have him because not only is he a connection to the student population here in the city of Athens, but also he just has a wealth of knowledge and talent. So we're really looking forward to having him on the committee. So the goals that we came up with, the first one is to highlight a commission, highlight the commission and committee members and the strengths that they bring to our work. And so I figured that a really good platform for this would be medium.com. I've mentioned this before, and I finally was able to set it up. Dr. Lewis sent me the email with the password months and months ago, and I just kept forgetting to look for it. But it's up. It's up. We have to log in. We're good. And I'm really, really excited to be able to just start getting to work. And so what I would like to discuss as, you know, we go through our committee meetings and even here, if anyone has any insight of someone that they would like to highlight, just to start introducing members of the commission to our audience on social media. So I figured that Medium would be a really good place to do that because it allows for an easier format whenever something is, whenever a post is in a longer form. When you just get a wall of text on a social media post, it's kind of hard to engage with that. But this would allow for something that's a bit more interactive and easy to consume. And then the next goal that we have is to establish a monthly column with the Athens Messenger. And the wheels are turning on that. I just received a follow-up email from Sydney Dawes with the Athens News. And I mean, they're very cross collaborative anymore. So if it goes in the news, it's likely going to go in the messenger, too. And we are working up the details. I believe the last email that she sent me, which I haven't had the chance to open yet, you know, she answers my questions about word count, you know, the timing of when this would be published. We're looking at once a month. So it's going to be really exciting to have a regular presence in a printed outlet. So another thing that we're discussing is what it would be called. If anyone has any ideas on names, we'll run everything by the commission after our committee meetings because I want this to be as collaborative as possible. So the next goal that we have is to promote the work of the commission committees. And we'll definitely be able to do that through social media and through the new columns. Develop a form for committees that would include event or project details. I believe we have a question about future events that we'll get to later. So this would be a great jumping off point for that. And then the last goal that I have is to increase and measure our social media presence, viewership, and participation, just to track our progress and see how we're doing. So that's all that I have for right now. But I'm willing to answer any questions or listen to any feedback that anyone has. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Davey, and that sounds great. In terms of having columnists or people to write, do you want to just get in touch with like various commission members or send out emails to ask for ideas or pitch ideas?
Yes, I think that's great. I know that last year, it seemed like there was a lot of interest. And where we kept falling short was making sure that the work that was done ended up being printed. So if we could just keep up that momentum, and now that we have a road paved, I think that's, it's going to be an excellent setup. So yes, you'll likely be hearing from members of the communications committee about topics that we'd like to cover, experiences and that anyone would like to speak on, current events. So we'll keep everyone posted.
Okay, great. Any other?
This is JW. I had a joy turning the tables on Dr. Lewis about a month ago, interviewing her in a two-part series for conversations from Studio B. And it was so, so much fun. And I wish we could find a way to, even if it's not just there, spotlight various members of the commission, something like that, so people could get to know them better. I mean, I found out, as long as I've known Dr. Lewis, I found out things about her in an interview that I still didn't know. And so I don't know, Claire, if I'm asking you a question or not, but that's those conversations from Studio B. I'd like to see more of a presence of us there if we could get that done.
Absolutely. Oh, go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
This is Carolyn. We can do that easily, everything now. We just have a link and you do the interviews, you know, right from where you are, so that's Studio anything. Now, I do have the links to those two interviews, but I just have been reluctant to send them. But you know, I'm really vulnerable and I don't care. But I thought, oh, this is so self-serving. But I'll send you all the links after the meeting and you can learn all about me.
Yeah, I mean, this is JW. Again, I mean, since we can just do it anywhere now, I would just love to, and I'm just picking on Rose, but I'd love to just spend 30 minutes with Rose and Jess, whether it's me or whomever, to interview her and just let people know more about her story.
I think that's a really great idea. So if that's something that's already available to us, I'm all for it, 100%. So I think, yeah, like I said, that's a really good idea and something that I think that we should all take advantage of. So is it, is it a setup, like a remote setup?
Yes, Adam Rich is the producer, and he'll send a link. And at the time that you've scheduled to do it, you just click the link and he connects you with the person that you're talking with. That's it.
We did hours over teams, this JW. I mean, I just sat in my office and she sat in her. We just talked and he recorded. It was awesome.
Well, that's great. Okay, we'll talk more in depth about this offline, but I'm really, really glad that you brought that up because I think that would be a tremendous asset. So thank you.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and scoot down to education and outreach. I think that's next. Yeah, education outreach. So I'll pass it over to Carolyn and Cheryl.
But Dr. Lewis, send out those links. I mean, come on.
I will. I promise. Is Cheryl on?
She got messaged, and she said that she wanted to extend her apologies that she couldn't.
Okay. Okay, thank you. This is Carolyn, and Cheryl has been seated since Barry is no longer on the commission.
I did it way back. This is Noah Trembley.
Go ahead, Noah.
I did it way back. This is Noah Trembley.
Oh, you did it way back?
Oh, okay.
Okay. So Cheryl has considered to be the co-chairman of the Education Outreach Committee. And of course, many members are Rose, Samara, Cheryl, JW. And of course, Paige, we consider her an honorary member, so she's always with us, too. Our goals for 2021, we're going to determine if we need to revise any language of the Athena Award criteria. We talked about revising and then decided, well, maybe we don't. We'll just look at it and see how it sounds if it's what we want. We might not need to do it. We're going to select a panel from the local art community to select the new Athena Award design. We're going to oversee the production of the award. Part of the criteria is that as the person is producing it, that we keep our eyes on it to make sure it's what we want and it's already written, and they know that. We want to continue the oral history project to conduct at least four additional interviews. More if Claire is able to do it. We want to continue and expand our speaking engagements to civic groups and to other organizations to educate about the commission. And JW suggested that we develop a speakers bureau. He did a lot of the speaking last year. We need more of you. We have a script. We have handouts. We need more of you, and we have engagements to say, yes, I'll go do it. It's usually for 15 or 20 minutes and then about 5, 10 minutes with questions. So JW, you can just talk a minute about your experience.
Yeah, this is JW. Just great experiences. And as a result of that, I joined the Lions Club and got some great contacts with the veterans here. So we can talk about logistics that, you know, a lot of people are looking for speakers. Sometimes you can invite yourself, but many times they'll invite you. So if you're interested in thinking about this, talk with us about it. And we can certainly help you get it done. It also helps us get our name out there, get our presence out there, and perhaps get us some additional members in the future. I'm still amazed at how many people still don't know we exist. I just find that amazing, right here in the city. So the more we can do this, the better, I think.
Thank you. We want to expand our outreach activities to look at other organizations and what else we can do in the community. Of course, produce a seventh Athena Award ceremony for November and work with the communications committee to promote the awards, starting in May and June, the process and the ceremony. I might add that when we met, we had three people of interest who interest about the Colin O' artists to develop a new design, Patty Mitchell, Stacia Davis-Moore, and Brian Alloway. Then right after the meeting, I started getting inquiries from Tim Martin, who's with Retail Design, Luke Howard, and Greta Haynesworth, who is Shades of Green, Shades of Class. I believe Luke is a student. And we did have an article in the Messenger and radio spots running on the stations, radio stations until the end of the month, so that might have helped a bit. But still, we're going to have some to choose from, for which to choose, which is exciting. When we met, the agenda either was, what do we do if we don't get any? And now, what do we do with all these we're getting, which is really exciting? So anyone watching, we encourage you, if you are thinking about designing an award, just contact us at the commission or the mayor's office, and we'll send you the flyer and all of the information that you can do that. We encourage that. Our next meeting is Tuesday, February 9 at 5 o'clock via Zoom.
One more thing, JW. I've enjoyed the channel rerunning the award ceremony from last year. I think it comes on two or three times a week. I love it. I totally love it.
That's great. Yeah, people, we have some definitely locally famous people from that, including you, JW. And just in general, anything else for education outreach?
No, Davey, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Davey, I'm sorry. I do have one more thing. We did a review of the award ceremony and to a person, we just decided everything really worked well, and we appreciate Claire for all her hard work and also the government channel. And so just want to say that. She was just great.
All right, great. Any other questions or comments? All right, let's move down to advocacy.
And I will try to be not quick, but we are looking, we actually started this process of looking at some goals last semester or last, like in October or so. And so we're still committed to those goals of researching like organizations to see both best practices and best processes that we may be able to adapt. We're also looking at increasing the effectiveness and impact of the work done on, of the committee and how it may impact and affect the community here in Athens. You know, one aspect is, one thing that we kind of talked about was the vaccine and a lot of the negative nature that goes around vaccines with certain communities and how can we advocate for certain communities to take advantage of certain assistance and certain programs here in Athens and Ohio overall. We also want to create a path and slash process that will allow for suggestions or the need for advocacy. You know, we are a small committee, and Athens is not huge, but it's hard to get everybody's voice. It's hard to really listen to everybody. And so if we can create some type of form, some type of submission process where ideas of both the committee overall, but also the community can, you know, request help, are bringing different things to our attention, things that may be missing from our walk of life or just the way that we maneuver and navigate the city as well. And lastly, we want to review best practices of the previous advocacy committee to see for best practices and to see what worked and what may not have worked to make sure that we're not duplicating the past and not getting the results that we want. Right now, my schedule is in flux, and so I need to send out a survey to all committee members to ask them when they're available. Just my work responsibilities have shifted around our meetings. So our next meeting is in flux. But once we're able to all get on the same page in terms of when we're able to meet, we'll make that announcement and be able to post it and go from there.
Slide, this is JW. I appreciate you stepping in here and assuming all this, especially all you've gone your life. But I'm going to step up and try to help you with this committee. So let's lock in that date. I just got really busy myself, but I really want to put some teeth into this effort, so.
No, no worries at all, brother. I mean, we know that the waves of busy, busy times in our lives comes and goes. And so, you know, trust me, as my work with the beginning of the semester piles up, I understand completely, but I will take you up on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, go ahead, Diane.
When we were doing the report to the city council this year, one of the things that I mentioned when I talked about advocacy had to do with the new, there are new regs that are in place that were extended for meetings to take place on Zoom. And that we thought that things like that might be something that this committee could do related. So when there's a meeting on Zoom to do city business, they've only allowed that because of COVID. But what we've noticed is that people with disabilities often can't attend meetings in person. So it makes sense to change the law, to change the regulations at the state level. So it was something that we just thought might be something the advocacy committee might think about for that it's like a regular thing, but it really does impact people with disabilities.
Well, definitely. We'll take a look at it.
Anyway, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. This is Davey. And one other thing that may, will be beneficial in the future, I think, is when the Southeastern Ohio Center for Independent Living, one of the five core services is advocacy. So there may be some ways to blend some of the advocacy efforts that run through the SIL with the Disability Commission as well. So I'm excited for that and to create more of like a hub of disability advocacy within Athens, too. Any other questions or comments about advocacy's committee's goals for the year and intentions? Okay, are there any announcements?
This is JW. I have one. I was asked to do like a video for a king celebration for Ohio University's, the Southern Campus in Ironton. And they're having their king celebration. I don't know the link yet, but it's Monday evening, I think, on the 25th. And I did a video musical presentation for it. So I don't know if you could go to OU Southern and find out what time it'll be Monday, but if I hear anything, I'll let you know when they're going to air that.
Thank you, JW. We had a comment from, I think Claire, you had already mentioned this, from Stephanie Morris about if we have any events planned right now for the next six months. And I don't know of anything, so I said no. Do we have any? Do we have anything planned right now? I don't.
This is J W again. I think, I'm glad you mentioned that because we do the big award. And I, I wish we could, I wish we could have something in the first half of the year, you know, that we could get some coverage of. We should really think about that. I mean, it's weird now, given the pandemic stuff, but I wish we could have something before June, some big issue or, or event celebration or something, but I don't know what that could be.
Yeah, this is, this is Davy, and I think I would agree with that. I think the Athena Award really focuses.
It's great.
On like, you know, one, one individual is the recipient. Also, you know, all the, all the nominations as well, all the people who are nominated. But, you know, maybe, I, I know like each month has a different thing in terms of disability awareness. So we may be able to pick a month and host some sort of event. That, that would be, I think, great in a lot of ways.
Yeah, some kind of disability awareness exercise or event or celebration.
Right. This is Davy. We used to have Challenge by Choice, which is an antiquated notion about people like experiencing disability. But, you know, those of us in the disability community don't really, you know, see that as, as something that's useful at this point. But I think, I think having an event that kind of showcases people's talents and abilities and skills would be really cool. Yeah, I think that's something that we can maybe bring to our committees and maybe we could talk about it at our next commission meeting. How does that sound?
Let me think about it. This is J W. And if others would think about it, what could we do, you know, these first six months to keep our momentum building toward the Athena Award Ceremony?
Sure. Diane, I saw your hand up.
Sorry, Diane.
That's okay. This is Diane. So one of the things our committee actually talked about was doing the walk and rolls again. I know it's not a big event, but they are events that highlight things that they're doing and that help the city to become more accessible.
Sure, sure.
To do those again after people are allowed to be out and about.
I agree, those are good.
The Aryan March about mental disability awareness month and the county board of BD will traditionally do something around that. And so there's certainly opportunities to partner two entities to see if we can do something. We don't know what we'll be doing this year, given the pandemic. But we're certainly open to partnering, doing something together. And there, there's likely another month, October, I believe, is disability, disability employment awareness month. And, and I know that's closer to the Athena Award, so that might not be something you're looking for. But anyway, March is sort of earlier in that, in the year that might tie into what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, forget about those events. That's right.
Go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
No, I didn't. Thank you.
I thought you were about to say something. This is Davy. We do have an announcement from an audience member, which is from Stephanie Morris, who is the director of the Athens, Athens Community Choir.
Yes, oh, yes.
And she wanted to announce that they're having a membership drive. So anyone who's interested, people with disabilities and without disabilities are encouraged to join. I think they're doing it all through Zoom right now during the pandemic. And they're also looking for advisory board members for that organization. So if any, we can put that in our, in our minutes as an announcement too. Other than that, if there are no more announcements, I would take a motion to close out our meeting.
Go move. Aryan.
Carolyn, second.
Second. All in favor? I. Raise your hand.
All right, guys.